Everyone, I'd like to welcome you all to the Tuesday, February the 28th, 2023 meeting of the Denton County Commissioners Court. At this time, I'd like to welcome up Paul Bastiets, our Denton County Veteran Service Officer. He is going to lead us in our invocation and our pledges were led by Eric Gildersley with our county administration. I want to remind everybody to turn off your cell phones.
Good morning. Please pray with me this morning. Father God, we pray for our world today. We pray for peace and hope to be abound. Many have been troubled by natural disasters, conflict, and the results of global events. In challenging times, help us turn to you as our source of strength and hope. Merciful Lord, we offer a prayer for your peace, to be with those who have suffered and continue to do so. Lord, lift up our world in prayer. There's so much pain and suffering. Give us your wisdom and teach us how to pray for the world. May your kingdom come, your will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Lord, as we pray for the world this week, help us pray in line with your will. We know that you're a good and sovereign God. Please help us to trust you as we go out into this broken and imperfect world to be your salt and your light. Almighty God, lend your strength to all those who are there in times of crisis, fear, and hurt. Give courage to the first responders who continue to do this important work they are called to do, looking beyond the risk of the sake of those who need your help and protection. May we be mindful to count our blessings. Pour out your spirit upon us and let us dwell with you in your house all the days of our lives. Bless all of our days on this earth and bless all of your comings and goings. Be with us today in this Commissioners Court. May the proceedings be in your will for the sake of our county, the great state of Texas, and our nation. Bless our elected officials for their leadership and guidance. All this we ask in your name. Amen.
Please join me in honoring the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. And now for the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you, Eric, and thank you. Thank you, Paul. All right, we have no, no individuals registered for item one, for public input, for items not listed on the agenda, so we'll proceed forward. Let's go to item 13C, and I do believe we have Judge Brody Shanklin with us this morning. And Judge, if you want to come forward, let's go to item 13C. Want to be able to respect our colleagues in the judiciary and let them return to their docket. 13C is approval of a request to submit a grant application to the Texas Department of Health and Human Services Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, this is SAMSA, for the amount of $1,366,969 for over five years of funding for the fiscal years 2023 and 2028 at any appropriate action. And Judge, do you have any comments? Good morning. We're glad to have you.
Good morning, Judge. Thank you for calling us up this morning. Good morning, Commissioners. With the work of the county and you, Judge Eads, and all the Commissioners, as you know, the Drug Court has continued to grow and prosper. This would be the third grant that we would be able to receive. And as you can see, it's about $272,000 a year over that five-year period. And we just ask that you all allow us to be able to apply for that to get the money so that we continue to grow our Drug Court program. I think we're doing good things with it, and we always appreciate y'all's support and all the resolutions that you give for our graduates. So other than that, I think the paperwork speaks for itself.
Perfect.
If you have any difficult questions, I've got our Drug Court manager here to get my back on that, so.
I hear you. That's great. All right, thank you, Judge. Members, are there any questions or comments for the judge? Do we have a motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? Well, I would just like to thank you for all the good work that you and the entire team. It's very much a team effort for what y'all do in the, to help this specialized docket. So anyway, we appreciate that. All right, we have a motion and a second hearing. No other comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Judge.
Thanks, Judge.
All right. Let's go to, uh, I want to go to, let's go to item 4A, which is our public hearing. We have a public hearing on February the 28th, 2023 at 9:00 a.m. to consider the installation of school zone signs, traffic flow signs, parking restriction signs, no parking signs, and no overnight commercial parking restriction signs around the vicinity of Cross Oaks Elementary School located within Denton County Municipal Utility District Number Four. This is Cross Oaks Ranch in Denton County, Commissioner Precinct One. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
Move to open, please.
We have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We are in a public hearing. Do we have a staff presentation or any comments from the staff? Welcome forward. Stephen Bownap with our department, our engineering. Good morning, Stephen.
Good morning, Judge.
Good morning, sir.
Okay, so just brief history on the district out here. Back in 2014, the district in court entered into an interlocal agreement to extend the county's traffic control regulations. It's been amended a couple of times to add some additional streets. What the request today are some various traffic control signs, some additional school zone signs. Let's see. I tried to clear this up, and I don't know if I succeeded, but so they've added some school zone, no parking signs, some additional school zone signs as well around the school out there. They've also requested some additional traffic control, some stop signs, some yield signs. As you can see, this entrance off of 720 is kind of convoluted, a little confusing, so they've had some issues with accidents out there. So hopefully that'll clear that situation up. And they've also had, they've also had some problems with commercial trucks parking in the, in the neighborhood. And so they're seeking to kind of control that with some no parking, some commercial no parking signs as well. Little L P D provides traffic control, so it's not the Sheriff's Department, it is Little L P D.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments for Stephen? Is there any questions or comments for Stephen?
Judge.
Okay, go right ahead, please, sir.
So Stephen, realize there's, there's no financial impact to the county, as you mentioned, but will there be crossing guards and then the other things that will go along with this? And is that paid for by the, the district or?
Uh, if there are, and I don't know if there are.
Okay.
It would be covered by the district.
Gotcha.
Yeah, so there is no financial obligation to the county for.
But certainly nothing to the county.
So the district will place the signs, the county's not placing the signs out there.
So all those costs will be covered by the district too?
I'm sorry?
Those costs will also be borne by the district.
Yes, right. Right.
Right. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other questions from Commissioners Court? All right, thank you, Stephen. Are, is there anyone in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the installation of the school zone signs and other signs as well? Sir, okay, we have, thank you for being here. If you'll go ahead and introduce yourself and your, and your, give us your address for the record. Thank you.
My name is Andrew Mazerick. I work with Peloton Land Solutions. We are the district engineer for Denton County, mud number four. I was working with Stephen alongside on the installation of these signs. Happy to answer any additional questions if, if any members with the Commission have any.
Perfect. Good. Thank you for being here. Members, do you have any questions of our guests?
No, sir. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else in attendance wishing to speak in favor of or opposed to the installation of the signs? All right, do we have a motion to close a public hearing?
Move to close.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Move to approve.
Now we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Williams and second by Commissioner Falconer for the signs listed in item 4A. Is there any questions or comments from members of the court? All right, hearing none. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you, Judge.
All right, members. Let's proceed forward to item 8A, which is approval of changing slot 014 PR to senior paralegal from part-time to full-time. And this is, we do have Judge Jan here. He is advocating for this, and we've met with them, and we support this, this, as part of the reorganization within their department. Members, do y'all have any questions for the judge? All right, hearing none. The chair will move for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Judge. Commissioners.
All right. I'm looking through the audience, making sure we don't have any other guests with us today. I need to, all right. Hold. Okay. Good. All right. Let's proceed forward to, let's go to item two, which is our consent agenda. Members, are there any items on the consent agenda you'd like to pull, or do we have a motion for approval?
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Our consent agenda today consists of item 2A, approval of order-making appointments and any appropriate action. Item 2D is approval of interdepartmental transfers. Item 2C is approval of payroll. Item 2D is approval of budget memory request 100810 for facilities management to transfer $2,339 from maintenance management to various building budgets to cover the remaining costs for elevator service to Denton County buildings. Item 2E is approval of budget memory request 100850 to transfer $17,990 from administrative supplies to training and education for the Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant. Funds will be used to conduct training for public health clinical staff and medical reserve core volunteers. And 2F is approval of budget memory request 100860 for the criminal district attorney to transfer $3,000 from training and education to dues and subscriptions to transfer as needed to ensure there are enough funds to pay for the state bar dues for attorneys and inappropriate action. And item 2G is our road superintendent report for January 2023, and this is for recording purposes only. All right, let's go to, I don't, we're going to skip that for right now. Let's go to our auditor. Let's go to item 5A, approval of the bill report, payments from CSCD Committee Corrections, T A I P Sheriff's Training, Sheriff's Forfeiture, V I T Interest and DA Forfeiture Funds are presented for recording purposes only. Mr. May.
Thank you, Judge. I have one addition to the bill report today, and that's to the Secretary of State Election Division for $61,231.53.
Perfect. All right. Do we have a motion to accept the amended bill report? Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Jeff, and next is 5B, approval of the reappointment of the Denton County Auditor, Jeff May, for a two-year term beginning April the 1st, 2023 and ending March 31st, 2025. And I will gladly make the motion to do that, to approve your reappointment. We have a, we have a second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? Well, Jeff, I appreciate all that you've done for Denton County since you've been here, and I know you're going to continue to do great things. So we, on behalf of Commissioners Court, wanted to say thank you for, for all that you do and the leadership and partnership you are with the Commissioners Court.
Thank you very much.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, let's go to 6A is approval to revise an evaluation committee member appointment of RFP 22-2690 to Enterprise Resource Planning Software and Implementation Services from Gustavo Hernandez, Director of Human Resources, to Tony Luton, Assistant Director of Human Resources, and any appropriate action. The chair move for approval, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6B, approval of purchase of Rapid Seven Insight V M software from Solid Border Incorporated, an amount of $99,849.75 through the Texas Department of Information Resources Cooperative Contract D I R T S O 4365, any appropriate action.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 6C, approval of the report on proceeds from the online surplus auction 22-2741 held in February, January, and February of 2023.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 6D, approval to declare miscellaneous equipment, office supplies, furniture appliances as, as tools and tools of surplus and advertising placed in online auction 23-2746. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 6E, approval of purchase of lime slurry from La Hoist North America of Texas LLC through the Tarrant County Cooperative Contract 2022185 lime slurry in the estimated amount of $172,500.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 6F, approval of report on proceeds from the online surplus auction 22-2737 held in January, February of 2023.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 6G, approval of revisions to purchasing policy P U R 141 Vehicle Assessment Committee. I know we had posted this a couple of weeks ago, and some members had some questions. And, and do we have any, uh, motion for approval?
Move to approve.
Do we have a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer? Any discussion?
I'm good with it. I just wanted to make sure that.
Your voices, is your microphone about the judge?
I'm sorry. I've got it on. I wanted to make sure that the department heads and the people that had been on the committee before knew what we were doing and why we were doing it. And I think you spoke to the sheriff.
Yes, ma'am. I communicated with all of them.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you, Commissioner, for your, your care and attention to that. And thank you for your good efforts, Commissioner Williams. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank y'all for y'all's efforts on that. We're always in the process of improving our, our internal processes around here. I think that's great. Next is 6H, approval of award of Fast Psych LLC for RFP 22-2724 telepsychiatry services for inmates as recommended by the evaluation committee and any appropriate action.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Members, if we'll go back earlier in our agenda, skipping around a little bit, but we have several guests here. We want to accommodate their time. All right, next is item 3B. This is a presentation and update regarding emergency services district number one. I'd like to welcome Mr. Sheldon Gilbert Forward. He's the president of the E S D. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
And thank you for your service.
Thank you for having us. And honorable judges and commissioners, thank you for allowing us to come and give you a 60-day, there we go, I was looking for the mouse here, a 60-day update on what is happening with the emergency services district one. So subsequent to the unfortunate indictment of the former fire chief in December of 2022, this Commissioners Court, as well as the town of Argyle and the town of Northlake, all adopted a resolution giving us some general direction on what needs to happen moving forward. And there was four key elements to those directives in all of those resolutions. And that was for one, to transition the employees from the previously Argyle Volunteer Fire Department to the E S D, including a public retirement system. Oh, there you go. A, moving all assets from the Argyle Volunteer Fire Department over to the E S D, conducting a comprehensive operational and financial forensic audit, and then ultimately dissolving the A V F D at the appropriate time with an overarching directive to make the firefighters whole for that which they were wronged, they were wronged by. And so that was our, our, our call to action. In January, we were fortunate enough to bring together a new leadership team led by our new fire chief, Ricky Vaughn, who you're going to hear from in a moment, who has done an extraordinary job bringing together the team and, and, and conducting himself and our team in, in a way of accountability and transparency that I think is going to help us resolve these issues in a timely manner and set us up for a very sustainable future. In addition to that, we've had new board members with Rick Merrill and Keith Mashburn, Cliff Travis was reappointed, and Jim Carter is still remaining on the board. And they have all been working very closely with me and the leadership team to make sure that we are, are moving this forward as we were directed. The chief has put together an executive team that consists of myself and the treasurer, Rick Merrill, and then also Sam Johnson, who's the association president for the Argyle Professional Firefighters. He's with us today. You're going to hear from him. Cody Miller, the assistant chief, who stepped up in an interim level, did a tremendous job keeping this place going until with such time we could put our team in place. And Jamie Shadows, who's the administrator, administrative assistant for the organization, Megan Reynolds, who's our communications director, she's here with us today. And, and Josh Mills, who's a, who's a captain who stepped up and is interim, interim assistant chief to keep this place going until the new leadership team was in place. So we have a wonderful leadership team that meets every Thursday. We spend pretty much all day going over what we need to do, tracking the progress. The chief's going to give you a little more detail on that, ensuring we have everything in place for what lies ahead. The third thing I wanted to give you is some general observations to date, understanding that we are 60, we are 60 days in. So there is much more to learn, much more to find, unfortunately, but I do believe that we've, we've got a number of observations that I think might be instructive and helpful for you as the county commissioners, watching what we're doing and, and understanding that we're, we're meeting our directives. The first thing I would probably say is that the response and the men and women of the E S D have, have never failed us, and that that's strong, that response has been strong. The level of service has never suffered. The calls have always been answered. They've always operated in the most optimized professional manner possible, and the outcomes have been good. In other words, they are providing service to the community in a very positive and an effective way. I would also say a general observation is their, their purpose and their morale right now is at a very high level. The chief, much to his credit, saw it very important to make sure that they were at the table with us as we move forward with this and put this organization on a trajectory for success in the future. They are at the table with us. They're a part of this process, and that is going very well. And I'll let Sam speak to that a little more. On the, on the other side of the ledger, what we've identified is there, there in fact are a number of financial gaps and issues, both with operating costs, with capital, with excessive debt, with a lot of different things that are going on that we're going to need to correct for the future. And we're working to do that, but that is something that obviously is going to need to be taken care of. There was an immediate need for some guardrails and some best practices to be put in place as it relates to accounting, check writing, collections, all the different elements of accounts payable and accounts receivable. There is significant financial and I believe civil liability for the, for the A V F D, potentially some of that with the E S D moving forward that we're going to have to make sure we are aware of as we, as we correct these wrongs and we make sure that things are in place for a sustainable future. They were overextended financially, and they were overextended with debt. And we're going to have to figure out how to resolve that short-term and long-term with the sustainable funding elements. There are significant IRS issues and, and penalties and reporting errors and omissions that we have had to clean up and are continuing to work on. And when I talk to you about what we've done in a minute, you'll see that most of those have been addressed. There are a number of expired contracts and regional agreements have been mismanaged, and so there are a number of things that need to be cleaned up and are being cleaned up in that effort. And so those are, those are some of the, the initial findings for the 60 days that we're looking at, that the forensic auditors are looking at, that everybody's looking at, and, and we have in fact taken some actions. So what have we done to date? So as of this morning, I can tell you that all assets have been transferred from the A V F D to the E S D, including Station 13, 513 in Lantana, with the exception of it has to be recorded. But we did find the transfer document. It is being recorded by the mortgage company, and so. But we did find the transfer document. It is being recorded by the mortgage company, and so all assets should be in our possession any day now, any moment now. Everything other than that station are in our possession, and they have been recorded with the county as well as with the motor vehicles. We have began two forensic audits, one with B D O, which is an international forensic auditing firm, fairly high level, but we felt we needed to have the best in here. And they're taking a look at all of the disbursements from the A V F D and the subsequent relationships that were in place during that. That is underway. They are under contract. They are gathering data, and they are beginning that work. Simultaneous to that, we have a secondary audit, a C P A audit going with a local firm out of Plano, looking specifically at the retirement contributions and the inaccuracies there, as well as some pay issues as they were being paid inappropriately as working for a private corporation versus a public entity. And so we're having to unwrap exactly what that is and what that looks like. And that is underway. Those audits should be done in the next two to four months, most likely. Certainly, the C P A audit will be done probably sooner in the next sixty days. The B D O audit may take a little longer, maybe up to four or five months. We are, in fact, beginning the transition of the A V F D personnel to E S D One with a target date of April first. I know we told you all it would probably take six months, but we wanted to underpromise and overdeliver. I'm going to let the chief speak to that, but I believe he's got us on a trajectory to make that happen. All taxes are paid with some current outstanding penalties that we will be paying within the next ten days, and we believe we will be squared away with the I R S. We're going to be conducting some budget and election workshops in March and April for our Board of Commissioners to talk about what our budget will look like April first, when they, when we take control of the employees and they come over to the E S D. And then, secondly, some actions we probably are going to have to take next November on the ballot to clean up district boundaries and ultimately to address a sustainable funding source moving forward. So that being Lantana and some other areas in Northlake that, you know, we're never in the district, that we probably need to take a look at what that might look like. We are going to be conducting some town hall meetings and making appearances at all of our water boards and town councils in April, June, and October to keep them updated on this process, to make sure they understand exactly what's going on. And subsequently, if there are, in fact, any ballot measures on the ballot, those in the district will be fully aware of that. And then, lastly, we're updating some expired contracts in the meantime that needed to be in place for day-to-day operations with Lantana and Justin, and making sure that they are, in fact, executed properly and functioning properly. So that is what we've done in the past sixty days as far as taking some actions. And the other thing I wanted to just kind of go over briefly is just the general areas of concern moving forward. And we're going to continue to work with all of our stakeholders within the district, and we're definitely going to work with you all to make sure that you're updated on these. But we have a significant operational budget gap and future financial sustainability is an issue. And we're going to have to make sure that we address that short term and long term. That is probably our area of greatest concern. The civil and financial liability as it relates to the retirement payments that were incorrect and the payroll that was incorrect, that is a significant issue. We have to figure out how to address moving forward. And then the district boundary cleanups and Lantana participation in the district is a concern. And future service levels and being able to accommodate for the growth, specifically in Northlake and some of the other external areas of the district. While we do this, we have to walk and chew gum at the same time because we're going to have a need for additional services out there as that growth occurs. So a lot on our plate, but I would tell you that I do believe we are getting our arms around it. I do believe that we have a plan to move forward and correct it. And I would like to give the fire chief an opportunity to come and share his perspective and then also Sam Johnson, the Association President, so you can get their perspectives, and then we would be happy to take any questions.
Perfect. Thank you.
Chief?
All right. Good morning, sir.
Morning, Judge. Commissioners?
Good to see you again.
Ricky Vaughn, Fire Chief, Denton County, Emergency Service District Number One. Thank y'all for having us here. I'd just first like to say thank you for your continued support. It's just been amazing. Jody and his staff have been very supportive the last few weeks, helped us get us through this process. I'm just going to give a real brief overview of what we've been working on as an organization over the last sixty days, and it's been a whirlwind. There's been a lot of things going on, and we're accomplishing a lot every day. Anytime you go through a crisis such as what we've gone through, it's always amazed me how people come together and we pull together our resources, our neighbors come together, we help each other out. That's what we do. People have asked me, well, why didn't you run away? You know, I'd say, you could have run away from this crisis. But as I work with our.
As a career, you run towards problems as you run away.
You know, as I've worked with our firefighters, I've learned and I, that we inherently have the same internal drive, and that is firefighters run towards the fire, not away from the fire. So as, when they're in a crisis, we come together. So with that continued support, you know, there's been all forms of intervention. And, but all those interventions are based on relationships. And so the three areas, there's three areas I really want to focus on, but the first one is I, we've done a lot of efforts in building relationships, rebuilding relationships. Anytime you have a crisis such as this, you've got to also rebuild trust, and you do that through transparency and accountability. So we're working on that externally. We've gone to several town council meetings, met with community leaders, gone to certain different events, giving updates on our progress and what we're doing. So we're doing that in hopes of building those partnerships and to help us get through this process. Internally, as fire chief, I have to earn and build the trust of our firefighters. So one of the things I have done, I have specifically went and I've met with every station, every shift, been four or five hours. We've also did a survey, asking them, you know, what are the challenges, what are the concerns they have? So we're building those relationships internally as well. I've also meet, met with each of our staff, one-on-one, and asking them questions about understanding their job, what they do, what they need, and it helped me learn the processes, which gets to my second part. The second part is, you know, we've spent a lot of time for me learning and reviewing our internal processes, our workflow processes, our procedures and how we operate, what things we need to change, our checks and balances. Those things that we are working on, and those are sometimes from an external view and sometimes are from an internal view. We're also looking at data. We're looking at our call volume. We're looking at our response times. We're looking at the amount of training we do. We look at everything we do to kind of give us a full picture, a comprehensive view of where we are as an organization, kind of a, kind of a scorecard of how we're doing. So we're doing that as well to kind of help us see where we need to go, because if you don't measure it, you can't improve it. So we're trying to do those things as well. And then last, what we're probably here mostly to talk about is the big challenge and charge we've been given, and that is to transition from the A V F D to the E S D. And we've been working on that from day one. Just as the President spoke, first week, that Thursday, I set up a meeting with our command staff, and it was a very simple meeting of sitting at the whiteboard and let's brainstorm everything we need to do to make this transition happen. Everything from uniform issues to changing our assets, moving those assets over, making sure our benefits are in line, our retirements, our budget, all those things we looked at, we started making notes of, and we created a spreadsheet or Gantt chart to kind of help monitor that. So I can tell you, we've worked each week, and each week we come back with different progress reports, and we are knocking things out every day that we're getting done. Some of the things were already done. Some of this transition has actually been ongoing. So some of the things like our regulatory agencies, like as the Texas Commission on Fire Protection, we were already transitioned to Denton County E S D One. So that was something we didn't have to worry about. So, but you've got to review all those things and see what you need to change and what doesn't need to change. And so we've done that. And now we're kind of focused on really three areas within this transition that I would say are kind of hard target things that we are down, getting close to the finish line on. And the first one is our retirement. We've got to transition our retirement. We are currently in a Fidelity 401 K as a nonprofit corporation, and when you go to a public entity as an E S D, you can no longer contribute to that. So we are working with them to do that, and we are also working with T C D R S to, as since we'll become public employees. So the plan is, we've got everything set up so far for April first. So on April first, the contribution deficit will be turned off for the 401 K and the contribution will be turned on for the T C D R S. So that's what, that's what the plan is for that. There are some other issues with currently, that'll be, the, their current 401 K will sit there kind of dormant for a little bit until we determine how do we recover the funds, where do we put the funds for the firefighters? And then we'll look to put note that, transitioning that to an IRA, individual IRA for the firefighters. So a lot of work that's going to happen after the fact, but the key hard date there is that transition from the 401 to the T C D R S. The next thing that we've been working on every day and we're getting closer to is the budget. We have to consolidate our A V F D budget into an E S D budget, and we are doing that. We have consolidated that. We've uncovered all the, some of the debt issues, where the taxes and everything, we're putting that all into one budget. We're trying to figure out how can we create a balanced budget in the future. It's going to be very challenging, I'll admit it, but we are working to that end. And so we are making progress. We do have a draft budget ready, and as we get to do our work session with the Board of Commissioners, we should have that ready to go. And then the last hard date thing that, it's not as hard as the other two, is we're working on employee handbook. Essentially, these firefighters will be employed, changing employment, right? They'll be going from an A F D nonprofit corporation to a public entity, E S D. So they will be new employees, and so we're working on employee handbook that will basically talk about their vacation hours, their benefits, policies and procedures, administrative directives such as sexual harassment policy, what do you do if you have an accident? All those things are important as a new employee, understanding their roles and responsibilities for them and for the organization as well. So we are working on that, and I've charged our Association President and our Associate Chief to work to develop a, put together a committee that is diverse from all our members, from every rank and every shift, and they meet every week, sometimes more than once a week, to put together this, put this policy together, this administrative directive. And they look to give that to me, a draft by tomorrow, and then we will be taking that to the board, looking at it legally and putting that together. So that is a big thing, and that's another thing as far as building that trust with the firefighters, letting them be, have a voice and participate in that process. And so we are, we are working towards that end and helping, helping to rebuild those relationships and move forward. So with that, I will transition to the President of the Association, Sam Johnson.
Thank you, Chief. Good morning. Good to see you again.
Good to see you. Thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be here and be able to speak with the Commissioners. There's been obviously a tremendous amount of changes over the last few months with us, and I have to say we're very pleased with. I'm sorry.
Perfect. That's good.
Sorry. We're very pleased with.
Bobby can turn up the volume a little bit, maybe.
The new board that's in place, and we're very happy with the new chief. We're working very well together. The process of making the change and how we integrate together and work together from the association side, where like it's my job as the President for the Association to represent labor and benefits and rights for the employees, where it's their job to make sure that we have the funding and the safety and the equipment to do the job. We seem to mesh well right now. We're working in the right direction. Can't say enough good things about Sheldon and Merrill and Mashburn and Cliff and Jim Carter. They've been very instrumental in helping us get this far. The integration, there's a lot of, lot of area there. Getting all the employees to move from what would be Target to Walmart, and then for us to maintain all of those benefits and pay and health insurance and seniority, and not lose the opportunity to make sure that we get all the wrongs that were done by our prior chief and anyone that was attached to that. Can't lose the window and the opportunity to make sure that those employees get those wrongs righted. So that's a difficult area to navigate, but we've got the Department of Labor working with our C P A to help understand where the losses are and how we make those corrections that go back, you know, up to five years. And how do we just determine what a loss in our retirement five years ago would be worth today, and then how do we fund that correctly? So we're working very simultaneously together with that. It's been a real pleasure to work with Sheldon and the new chief on these items. There's still concerns for our future, and how do we get to the end of the road? Where is the light? You know, the damages that were done by Chief Mack, we haven't seen the full fold out on that yet, so we're still waiting to see what that looks like, what type of restitution he's going to be responsible for, if any, if he's found guilty. The damages that were done to the department as far as the image and how we move forward with recruitment and, you know, recovering that, I think as a, as a whole from the E S D and with the chief, we're going to do a fantastic job with that. But education and getting out into the public is the big key, and fortunately, we're on the same page with doing those things together. But for the moving forward part of it, I'm just going to echo a lot of what the President and Fire Chief have already mentioned, but moving our retirement from our 401 K to the T C D R S is going to be a big recruitment tool and a very big benefit for us moving forward. It gives our employees opportunity to actually have a retirement period, reach a retirement age, and then not have to work beyond those years unless they choose to. The handbook part of it, we've worked using a lot of the local information from other areas and other departments to put together what is good, up-to-date, you know, new age language, so that way we're up to date and carrying on the rights and benefits and expectations of the cities around us, so that way we're on par and being legal there. The handbook will allow us to have some accountability from the employee side to the employer side to where, you know, when our paycheck comes through, and then if we ever see a few dollars short, it's in our handbook that our paycheck's supposed to go in on Fridays, retirement's supposed to come out on the next Friday, and keep some checks and balances there. So we're very excited about that. We've been working towards some options with healthcare, what that looks like for us with being a public entity, and hopefully we've been finding some options there to help us reduce some costs, maybe improve our healthcare coverage for the members and bring some value there. But in all, there's still a long road ahead. There's still a lot of light to be uncovered. There is, you know, some deficits to be understood, and how did we get here? What have we missed this? How were these mistakes made? And how do we come out from the hole that we're in and, you know, build back to the department that we're looking forward to being in? I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
Good report.
That concludes our report. If there's any questions, we will be happy to answer them.
I will tell you, I'm very impressed with the work that's been completed to date, and I appreciate y'all being here and giving a public accountability for it. I think that's important that the, and y'all agree with that, that the integrity is restored, and the public confidence is restored. And so thank you, thank you, Sheldon and Chief and Sam and the board members for continuing to make transparency and improvements a real priority. I would ask, and I don't know if this is a Sheldon question or maybe it's a chief, how are we on retention? You know, I know the Commissioners Court was very, as y'all were, were very worried about retaining these wonderful employees after this, and we had lots of conversations about that back in the fall, didn't we, Diane? So we were very worried about that. So where, where are we on retention and attraction, and do we have any vacancies, or has there been a trend we could talk about?
I had your same concerns when I came in. Obviously, anytime you walk into a situation like this, you worry about people concerned about their well-being and leaving. And just as I spoke before, the opposite occurred. There was a kind of a rallying of, hey, we're going to get through this and be stronger, and so we have not lost a single person, which is a testament to our.
I think that's an applause line.
But, you know, and I don't take credit for that. I think we have a strong staff, and I think our members are the greatest there are. And the men and women, they haven't missed a beat, just as the President spoke. We haven't missed any calls, haven't done anything changed operationally. But, you know, there's a sense of, anytime something like this happens, and now it's being uncovered, there's almost a sense of relief. I think the healing process is actually starting to begin, and so I think that is keep them together. They're a very close-knit family. The fire service, that's pretty common, but even here, I would say it's even more intimately close. So, but yes, retention is good. We have no vacancies. We are looking at our staffing. We do have some areas that I have concerns about is how we do staff, our apparatus. But currently, we are, it's not impacting our ability to respond. Any other questions?
Great.
I would just add too, that in the context, we have fixed the pay and we have fixed the retirement contributions, it has actually made us more competitive. I think it's going to help us with recruitment moving forward.
Very good. Commissioner Edmondson.
Judge, thank you. I am so proud of you all. I remember what I felt like November seventeenth when I heard our. I remember what I felt like November 17th, when I heard that our ESD, which is in my precinct, Fire Chief was arrested at the airport and brought in handcuffs, and then I saw the FBI indictments. I was like, oh my gosh, what do we do? How can we help? And the good Lord blessed us, because I remembered Sheldon Gilbert, who I had known for years, who used to be in this business, and I called him and kind of asked what he was doing now, and he volunteered to step up at no cost to the ESD to provide his experience, which was exactly what we needed at that time. And then we found these other people to serve on the Board that each have strong experience, and it's being used wisely. And then I met the chief, our new chief, and I really appreciated what he said, when he said, one of the things that really encouraged him to run to this fire, not to run away from it, because he had not yet come on board, was the fact that we hadn't lost anybody, that these people were staying, they want to fix this, and I am confident they will be fixing it. Sheldon, you told us it was going to take longer. God bless you for making it in a shorter period of time. You guys are awesome. Thank you all very, very much, and Commissioners, thank you for helping support this really fine group of first responders.
Commissioner Williams.
Yeah, obviously, you guys have done a phenomenal job. You know, anytime you have a situation like this, retention's a concern. The, the biggest, of course, this is always the negative side of things, the biggest thing that sticks out in, in your, in your wonderful presentation, although there's so many positives, is obviously the shortcomings we're worried about on the financial side. And my, my question is, is what options are you looking at to make sure you can sustain what you currently have and going forward? Because that's when retention starts getting very, when you start dealing with that side of it, that's when people start going, oh my gosh. And I appreciate that you're open and honest about it, you know, and that's how it should be, especially to the employees. But, if I'm sitting there as an employee, and that's a big concern is, okay, how long do I have? Or how long is it going to take for them to hopefully feel more comfortable with the financial, finances going, going forward? Because if you're spending more than you're receiving, that's a tough thing to do, it's a tough thing to plug, especially, I would think, in this industry. So, do you have?
There's not one approach. First, we have to identify what are particularly the liabilities, you know, we are doing, we do have the CPA audit that's looking specifically at the 7K overtime and the retirement shortfalls and investigating. So, some of this, we're not going to know how much the damage is until we get those reports back. Of course, the forensic audit will probably give us more of the how this happened, not necessarily the numbers. But, once we have that, we realize operationally, we do have some shortfalls, so we are looking at different options. Some of the things we're looking at are, you know, looking at our debt, you know, is that something that can be restructured? Do we look at community partnerships and have, find efficiencies and something that we can do? We may have to make some hard choices. It's going to, we're also looking at our, I'll be honest, we're looking at the potential of election, like looking at our revenue source and how, what we do. There's some contracts that have been outdated, particularly with Land Tana, that we need to kind of look at putting that and bringing them into the fold, and so, we're looking to take that to the ballot in November, so as another opportunity to kind of adjust our, our revenue sources. So, it's not one answer, but we're looking at all options. So, I'll, be no doubt, we'll be coming to the Commissioners Court and saying, you know, any advice or suggestions you guys have would be greatly appreciated, so we're going to be looking at very different sources.
Chief, are you looking about E and O insurance? Does somebody have some Arizona missions insurance that can be tapped on?
Yes, some of this is covered under insurance. We do have filed a claim. In fact, I just filed an extension for the proof of loss. You have to provide a proof of loss for that, and because it's, obviously, there's indictments and the investigation, and we're still waiting on the results of CPA. I just filed an extension for that to give us another 60 days, because we can't show proof of loss until we have the information. So, that's another source, that there will be some of this covered under insurance, so it's, it's a different angle we're looking at.
Yeah, and I guess to make sure that everybody's clear, when you talk about your shortcomings, it's not on the day-to-day operations, is it as much as trying to cover what was stolen, quite frankly? And I think that everybody will be a lot more patient on those, those areas. It's just making sure that on Fridays, that their checks are deposited and they can depend on that income going forward. That's obviously the biggest concern I would have for these young men and women that are serving our community, so.
Yeah, and I think it's, it is safe to say that we've created somewhere between a 13 and 15 cent assessment fire department, and we've been running on nine to 10 cents. Take all the other stuff out of it. And so, some of that through growth, some of that through renegotiation of contracts, some of that through efficiencies, some of it may be new revenue.
Yes, sir. Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it. By the way, I, again, I didn't mean to spin anything negative. You guys have been doing a heck of a job getting, getting this thing back together.
It's things I lay awake and not thinking about.
Yes, sir, I understand.
Judge.
Thanks, Judge.
I have Commissioner Mitchell next.
Okay. I just want to thank you all for the job that you're doing. The past Board members, as well as the new ones, you've stepped up. We had a problem, you didn't try to hide it. You can't heal something until you pull the scab off of it, and you all have done that, and I thank you for your willingness to work with the Commissioners Court, to see what all can be done to take care of our firefighters. All of you all have worked real hard in this, this career, in your career, and I appreciate the fact that you're still willing to work and you're running to the fire instead of running away from the fire. I often say, when a fire happens, a lot of us run away, but the firemen always run to the fire. And you all had a fire, and you run into that fire to put that fire out, so our men and women can be taken care of, and I want to thank you for that.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Commissioner Falconer.
Yes, well, I also want to echo my thanks to you all. Very impressive what you, you've done so far. I have full faith and confidence in you guys pulling this together and fixing these, these issues. I, I did want to follow up just a little bit on Commissioner Williams. On, on the, the both short-term and long-term financial issues, they are, it does sound like you found more than just the, the issues with the stolen funds, right? So, as you said, there's a, what, and Sheldon, you mentioned the short, what does short-term mean in terms of time for you?
So, short-term, we're thinking about this fiscal year and how to, how to balance the budget, and then three-quarters of next fiscal year, how to balance the budget, assuming we can have the proper revenue converge with the expenses, whether that be through the election process, whether that be through growth, whether that be through these contract negotiations. But I'd say we, we have an 18-month hole that we need to figure out how to, how to fill, why we, why we correct this long-term. And so, we've got some different funding sources, and we, we were prepared to bring that today to open session, but we definitely will talk about what's out there, what we've found, what we can do, and where we'll need help.
Okay, thank you. And obviously, stating the obvious that all of you know, is that I think that, that obviously, we're concerned about the, essentially, the criminal actions that happened, but I guess I'm, I'm also now obviously concerned about the things that we found that had nothing to do with that, and that, and I'm confident this, that you all will, but that we, that can't happen in the future, right? That, that's, that's kind of operating procedure, and you can look at the nefarious things that went on and deal with that, and we need to, but we also have to make sure that the day-to-day is taken care of, and I know you all will do that. Thank you so much.
And just to give you an example, yesterday, I was working with IRS. I mean, we had tax fee penalties that are in the tens of thousands of dollars that we owe, and we were working through that, and we're looking to get that paid in the next 10 days. Those are expenses that we didn't know we had, and then, of course, we're adding expenses, as you can imagine, our legal fees are more than quadrupling as far as the amount of time we have to pay legal services, and so, that's not in the budget. All this CPA stuff we're doing, that's not in the budget. Now, some of that will be recovered, but some of it won't. And so, there are tens of thousands of fees and things we're adding to our budget that was not typically there. And so, it's not just an operational, and of course, the damage that occurred from the criminal charges have an impact on your operations too. You can't, you know, rob Peter to pay Paul without impacting your operations. So, yes, there are some holes, but I am confident, we're going to work through this, and just as we've got through the last 60 days, we're going to get to the next 18 months, and we're going to figure this out. And I have, I have full confidence in that, and it'll be a team effort. It won't be one individual, one entity. We'll work together in the partnerships, and I have all the faith in everyone in Dinton County, the citizens that have come and been very supportive. I have no doubt we will get through this.
Perfect. Commissioner Edmondson, thank you, Commissioner Falconer.
Judge, for those of you who are watching online, and then maybe even for some people here, when we hear about an election, what that is, that is the citizens of the areas served by the ESD voting to tax themselves in order to provide this service. And I'd like to point that out, because here, the county Commissioners set a tax rate that covers all the expenses the county has, but when we're talking about an emergency services district, the citizens who receive that service voluntarily pay for it through a tax, a property tax. And from what I'm hearing, it sounds like we're, we're going to have an election, perhaps either for new groups to come into the ESD or to raise the, the tax. And I find it hard to, to believe that any citizen is going to say, no, I don't want to have fire service, and I'm going to vote against this. So, I hope you'll have a great election, and let us know what we can do to help on that.
We will keep you informed. We plan on coming back several times.
Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? All right, this is, this is just a presentation, there'd be no action, but thank you all for the transparency and the good work. All right, members, let's go to 7A, which is Approval of a Budget Amendment Request 100770, to transfer $82,303 from the 442nd District Court to the 367th District Court within the Drug Court Expedited Technology Software Services line items to the transfer of fund moving, funding associated with the Family Drug Court to the 367th District Court in which it now resides.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 7B, Approval of Budget Amendment Request 100800 for the Justice Management Division to transfer $15,525 from salary assistance to overtime cash options to cover the shortage in the overtime line item.
Move approval.
Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 7C, Approval of Budget Amendment Request 100820 for Public Health Clinical to transfer $2,925 from administrative supplies to technology equipment to purchase desk scanners. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 7D, Approval of Budget Amendment Request 100830, that will roll over 30,0979 from fiscal year 2022 to fiscal year 2023 for Permanent Improvement Fund Holter Building to transfer $538 from Permanent Improvement Fund Architects' fees to Holter Building for a total amendment of $31,517 for funds associated with taxes due for the Holter Building. The Chair move for approval.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 7E, Approval of Budget Amendment Request 100840 for the County Jail to transfer $575,239 from salary assistance to overtime cash option outside of the Budget Amendment and Human Resource Overtime Policy as recommended by the Budget Office for the jail to continue to operate as mandated by the Texas Commission on Jail Standards due to a shortage of detention officers.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 7E, Approval of Budget Amendment Request 100880 for the County Jail to transfer $26,791 from salary assistance and $43,151 from non-departmental out-of-county prisoner contingency to county jail out-of-county prisoner expense for a total transfer of $69,942 to cover the cost of inmates housed at Montague and Cook County jails for the month of January due to a shortage of detention officers. With a motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, let's go to 7G, Approval of Budget Amendment Request 100870 for Human Resources to increase revenue and allocate expenditures to United Healthcare Wellness Reimbursement Department, in amount of $3,700, $3,700 for hospitality supplies and $11,300 for employee programs for a total amendment of $15,000. United Healthcare is reimbursing Dinton County for expenses associated with the wellness program and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We already did 8A, let's go to 8B. This is a report from Human Resources regarding hiring actions of elected officials. This is presented for recording purposes only. Mr. Hernandez.
Judge, Commissioners, good morning. Okay, let me start. One new hire for the County Criminal Court, number four. Two new hires for the County Clerk, one promotion in the County Clerk. One new hire in adult probation, one new hire in the District Attorney's Office. Two new hires in JP 1, one new hire in JP 3. Two new hires, oh, I'm sorry, two rehires in juvenile probation, one lateral transfer in juvenile probation, one promotion in Probate Court, number one. Five new hires in the Sheriff's Office, one promotion in the Sheriff's Office, two new hires in the Tax Office, and one promotion in the Tax Office. That's it for this week.
All right, thank you. That is presented for recording purposes only. Next, let's go to Item 9A. This is Approval of the Texas Department of State Health Services Dishes Fiscal Year 2024 State Tuberculosis Prevention and Control Grant Renewal in the amount of $150,452 for fiscal year 2024. This is September the 1st, 2023 through August the 31st, 2024, and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is Approval of Department of State Health Services Dishes Contract for the Fiscal Year 2024 Hanson's Disease. This is HHS 00032760001, funding an amount of $98,987 effective September 1st, 2023 through August 31st, 2024. Motion by Commissioner Edmondson, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, we're going to pull 9C at the request of the Department. Let's go to 9D, Approval of the Health and Human Services HHSC 2024 HIV Prevention Services Grant Contract, renewal amount HHS 000077800037, in amount of $142,212 for September the 1st, 2023 through August 31st, 2024. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 9E, Approval of the Local Public Fund Health Services Grant Renewal Contract, number HHS 00102250001 for fiscal year 2024 and 2025 in amount of $97,596. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 9F, Is Approval of Fiscal Year 2024 Immunization Services Renewal Grant Contract Between the Department of State Health Services Dishes and Dinton County Public Health. Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 9G, Approval of Amendment Number One on the Department of State Health Services COVID-19 Workforce Expansion Grant reflecting a revised termination date of June 30th, 2024. Motion by Commissioner Falconer, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 10A, Approval of Request to Hold a Public Hearing Tuesday, March 28th, 2023 at 9:00 AM to Consider, Prevent, or Take Appropriate Action for a Special Use Permit in the Lake Ray Roberts Plan in the Zoning District. This is SUP 22-02. Property R115503 is located in Lakeview Ranchettes, Block B, Lot 8. This is .3679 acres in Commissioner Precinct 1.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 12A, Approval of the 2022-2023 Interlocal Agreements for the Use of the Dinton County Radio Communication Systems for the Following Agencies Within Dinton County. This is the Aubrey ISD Police Department, Dinton County ESD Number One, Double Oak Police and Volunteer Fire Departments, Hickory Creek Police Department, Oak Point DPS, Sanger Police and Fire Departments, and the Town of Trophy Club Police and Fire Departments.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is item 13A, discussion and possible action related to disaster declaration, executive order, and any appropriate action. There'll be no action on this item today. Let's go to 13B, approval of United Way of Denton County funding requests to fulfill allocation of American Rescue Plan for housing assistance, nonprofit assistance, and food assistance due to COVID-19 and any appropriate action. Motion by Commissioner Mitchell, second by Commissioner Edmondson. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to 14A, approval of agreement for construction of DCCB HVAC renovation, ITV number 22-2713 between Denton County, Texas and Infinity Contractors International, LTD, in amount of $3,901,663 with funding to come from the American Rescue Plan Maintenance Management, DCCB HVAC renovation. This is order line item 5466641095, as recommended by Denton County Purchasing Director. Chair will move for approval, second by Commissioner Edmondson. I want to thank Scott and his good team for all their efforts on this and Jody as well. Thank you all. All right, we have a motion, a second. Any comments? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14B, approval of the third renewal of the purchase agreement with Document Logistics LLC for the software renewal of a discovery solution for use by criminal defense attorneys with funding in amount of $21,238.61 to come from DA Chapter 59, fund line item 5966613045, as recommended by Paul Johnson, our Denton County District Attorney.
Move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner Falconer. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next is 14C, approval of one, a contract for sale of real estate between Briarwood Lutheran Ministries as seller and Denton County, Texas as buyer for the purchase of real property described as 60-plus or minus acres of land being all that certain lot, tract, or parcel land located in the Texas Pacific Railroad Survey, abstract number 1304, in the city of Copper Canyon, Denton County, Texas. The property for the purchase price of $6 million plus all applicable closing costs. And two, as part of the consideration for the sale of the property, Denton County, Texas will also enter into a property lease agreement with Briarwood Lutheran Ministries. For Briarwood Lutheran Ministries to occupy the property as a tenant, and the lease will be submitted to the Commissioner's Court at the future date, but the lease will commence upon the date of closing, the sale of the property. And number three, grant authorization to proceed with closing approval of the Denton for the Denton County judge to sign all necessary closing documents. And four, grant authorization for the Denton County Auditor and the Denton County Treasurer, as applicable, to pay earnest money in amount of $60,000 to title partners within 10 days of the effective date of this contract. And five, with, with funding to come from the American Rescue Plan Act funds and any appropriate action, the chair will move for approval. Second by Commissioner Mitchell. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next, let's go to item 17, which is our community updates. And let's start with Commissioner Precinct 1, okay? Commissioner Falconer.
Yes, so I've got a couple of things coming up shortly. Tax Fest in Carrollton is going on on March 4th from 3:00 to 9:00. It's always a fun time. And then Saturday's on the square there as well on March 11th. And, and I think that's, I think that's it for things happening in the next week or so. So, yes, sir, that's it.
Okay, thank you. All right, Commissioner Mitchell.
Traveling Museum for the Native American Texans at the library in Flower Mountain, March 1st, 7:00 to 8:30 PM. I have a Twin Coves Park Open House on March 4th, Twin Coves Park. Also, a STEAM Club, March 14th at the library, where kids can participate and learn and explore the world through science and technology, engineering, art, and math. Holifesta, March 18th in Flower Mountain on Spinks Road Heritage Park. Also have an annual father-daughter prom, March 25th, and we've been having a lot of these lately. We had one up in the Lake Cities area this past weekend. Code Enforcement 101, an introduction to property standards, March 27th, that's in Flower Mountain. We have coffee with the mayor on March 6th, 8:30 to 9:30 in Holland Village. First Fridays in Louisville on March 3rd, which is Friday. We have a nature walk in Louisville at Leila. Spring Break Camp, March 13th through the 17th at Leila, I said Leila, Leila. LISD High School Arts Show, March 14th at the Louisville Grand Theater. St. Patty's Texas Style, March 18th at Duane Ferguson Plaza. Thrive Nature Walk, March 19th at Thrive Nature Park. Also on, mark your calendars for a coffee with a legislator on March 25th from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM at the, no, at the Precinct 3 Government Center on March 25th.
Perfect. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Edmondson.
First of all, let me welcome our Double Oak Mayor, Mike Donnelly, who's with us today. And Mayor, I see that we're going to have a jelly bean and snack bag drop-off in Double Oak on March 1st, which is coming right up, and the 15th from 2:00 to 4:00. This happens on the first and third Wednesdays of every month. And this is non-perishable food items or monetary contributions given to CCA, Petty Place, Salvation Army, Open Harvest, and some of the LISD schools. On top of that, beginning March 3rd at 9:00 AM, we have a Parks and Recreation Open House here in Denton at the Denton Civic Center. And then a Senior Center Open House at Denton on March 4th. We also have fishing in the park at Rowan Oak, and that's March 4th from 9:00 to 12:00. And this is a free event with prizes awarded for first and second place. This is an event for children 16 and older, younger guys, sorry, you all won't be able to go to that. And then in Westlake, coffee and conversation is on March 7th and 8th with the mayor and talk about current issues for the town and school in Westlake. That's it, Judge.
Perfect, thank you. Before we go to executive session, I'd like to go back to item 3A. This is a approval of a resolution recognizing Michael Cummings' retirement. He couldn't be with us here today, but we wanted to take time to tell our thank yous to Mike for all his good work here at the county. This is a resolution honoring Michael Cummings for eight years of dedicated service to Denton County. The Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas during a regular session on the 28th day of February 2023, considered the following resolution, whereas Michael Cummings has been a loyal employee with Denton County Road and Bridge East, now known as the Denton County Department of Transportation Engineering, and retire on March 3rd, 2023 after eight years of service. Whereas Michael was hired as a driver equipment operator on February 11th, 2015, then later promoted to driver equipment operator 3 and was promoted again in June 2019 to foreman and retired from that position. And whereas Michael is a dedicated employee who provides a high level of quality and valuable service to the Department of Transportation and Engineering, as well as residents of Denton County, and has earned the respect of all that worked with him. Whereas Michael has trained several fellow employees on heavy equipment. His equipment operating skills and attention to detail have been a great help to our residents. Michael's devotion to assisting his coworkers has been greatly appreciated and respected by his fellow colleagues, and he will be deeply missed. Whereas the Department of Transportation Engineer would like to thank Michael for his commitment and hard work throughout his career and wish him well in his retirement. Now, therefore, a beat resolved, the Denton County Commissioners Court, Denton County, Texas, does hereby extend to Michael Cummings our sincere and grateful appreciation for his dedicated service to Denton County. We congratulate Michael on his well-being to retirement and extend our best wishes to him. Done in open court, this is the 28th day of February 2023, upon a motion by the chair, second by Commissioner Williams. Any discussion? Michael, I'm sorry you couldn't be here today, but I hope you're tuning in. And again, I hope this proclamation is a small token for our deep and abiding appreciation for your years of service to the county and making our road safer for the traveling public. So thank you so much. Any other comments?
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, and we are going to go to executive session. Before we do, I want to acknowledge a new face, not new to the county, but new inside our courtroom here, is Bianca Romero Correll. She is with us. She's going to be taking the place, or tried to take the place, of Ashley, who's been with us for all these years. I think Ashley's been with us. They both work for the county clerk's office, and Ashley's going to be moving on to a different job here at the county. Thank goodness she's staying here at the county. So Bianca, I've tried to go a little bit slower so y'all could, to break you in on the, on the learning curve today. So anyway, thank you for, thank you for being here. Next is item 15A, under Texas Government Code 418183F. This is a closed meeting to deliberate information which is confidential under the Texas Disaster Act related to managing emergencies and disasters and any appropriate action. Item 15B, Texas Government Code 551074A1, personal matters affecting the county advisory body, closed meeting to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a member of the advisory body to, with Denton County Commissioners Court appointees to the Denton County Emergency Services District Number 1. 15C, Texas Government, Texas Government Code 551072, deliberation regarding real property, closed meeting to deliberate the purchase, lease, or value of real property located in Denton County Commissioner Precinct 3 and Commissioner Precinct 4, when deliberation open meeting would have a detrimental effect on position of a governmental body in negotiations with a third person. And 15D, Texas Government Code 5510745A1, personal matters affecting the county advisory body, closed meeting to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a member of the advisory body to, with Denton County Commissioners appointees to the Child Protective Services Board. All right, and it is, what time is it? It is 10:20, and we are in executive session.